Okay, call this me and Squim City Council this work session to order. I'll go ahead and turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Council. I feel a little bad, but not so bad that I would change it. We, I'm not sure we'll fill the full 45 minutes. We probably could have dropped this on to the agenda, but it's really important that we, I just, it's important to all of the staff and to our consultant to try to make sure that you're included in the journey of this TIF analysis. And so this is, we're not at the conclusion of that analysis, but we're 85 to 90% there, and it's looking very promising. We've got some very sophisticated financial modeling going on, and we keep changing some of the assumptions to, to look at the perform in different ways, and then a lot of it depends on some scenarios that we're still investigating with some key players. So tonight is not a final presentation of that analysis, but an update. The reason I asked to get in front of you again and ask Bob to give that update was because, not because of the analysis, but mostly because of the timeline that the state outlines that, that we have to be sensitive to. And, and if we work backwards on that timeline by mid-November, which is really this week, we would need to, and he'll go through this in more detail, we would need to put out an, an announcement or a notice to the other taxing districts that we are considering it. No obligation, no commitment, but that we are in the middle of doing an analysis, and I don't think that's any secret to anybody, but we would just need to do that publicly to, to, to follow the state process. So it's mostly just updating you, making sure we have, you know, some nods or thumbs up or whatever to simply go through that, no obligation. And then I think Bob will tell you later in the presentation when we think the whole final analysis will be complete, probably mid-January or something, and then we'll be able to come back and really schedule some time to walk you through the sequence, the numbers, our conclusions, recommendations, et cetera. So that, it's really just a quick overview and then, and then hopefully getting your approval to make those notices. So I think that's the main thing. I have asked Bob to reintroduce himself and to do a quick overview of what TIF is in case you've forgotten, but we won't spend a lot of time on that, but I'll let him take it from here. Any questions for me before we, okay. Thank you, Bob. We can see you well. You're on the big screen, and we'll turn it over to you. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Matt, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As Matt indicated, my presentation is going to be brief. As indicated in the advanced materials you received, we've been exploring and evaluating how TIF might be a benefit to stimulate private development within your city as, and also as a funding mechanism to pay for the needed public improvements, which were likely beyond the capability of any one developer or development to support. And so as not to bury the lead, also to echo the City Manager's comments, I want to state upfront that our preliminary evaluation of the anticipated private development indicates that a formation of a tax increment area would be viable and beneficial to the Squim community in terms of providing sufficient revenues to support the cost of the needed public improvements. And although we have more analysis and fine tuning to complete, as the City Manager had, had indicated in his opening comments, it looks very positive. Decision tonight is not whether you form a tax increment area or not. Those will be decisions you'll make later, but the decision for Council tonight is simply if you want to proceed to the next step of the evaluation process, which is to authorize the City Manager to deliver notice to the other taxing districts inside the tax increment area that you intend to submit what's called a project analysis to the Office of State Treasurer in 90 days or more from the date of that notice. Also is indicated, this doesn't obligate you to perform or form a tax increment area. It merely achieves a notice provision required by the statute that will preserve your right to make a decision about a tax increment area later on. And so let me just review with you a few slides. And so as, as the City Manager had indicated, my name is Bob Stos. I'm part of Stos Development and Strategies, and I've been a consultant for communities, cities, counties, tribal ed, and some higher education for the last decade, planning economic development consultant, and then a previous career as a City Manager for over 30 years. So a lot of emphasis and focus on redevelopment, on economic development, and large-scale commercial development over the last 40 years. And I've worked on more than a dozen tax increment financing projects in the state since, since the legislation was created. This is the, the quick overview for our agenda tonight. Again, just touch on the, the TIF as a refresher to make sure you're familiar with it. Again, I know we, we covered it in detail at the last meeting. Give you just a little bit of the information from our preliminary analysis and really focus on the, that's the state's task and timeline schedule, and then we'll discuss next steps again. So real quickly, in terms of what is TIF? TIF is an economic development financing tool that supports the private development by redirecting some of the property tax revenues generated by private development to fund public improvements needed for the public development to exist. And how does it do that? Well, it does that by freezing the existing tax base with inside a potential tax increment area. And then anything, any assessed valuation growth that occurs after that formation of a tax increment area, those levies that would apply from certain taxing districts could apply to that assessed valuation, and that then, that amount is then allocated to the city in which to pay for the public improvements that caused the development in the first place. In Washington State, TIF is different from other jurisdictions in that it excludes a lot of the state, a lot of the overall property tax, which includes the state's property tax, and then any property tax that's necessary for, for bonds or school district levies. The, the types of public improvements that could be used and financed with TIF include your, your general sort of horizontal infrastructure that you can think about, streets, sidewalks. Utilities also includes some parking right facilities and parking terminals. It's available to all cities, counties, and ports. Those are the three jurisdictions that could form a tax increment area. It's designed to fund public infrastructure to support specific development because it'll be a but-for element or foundational element in the TIF analysis. In other words, but for the public improvements, the private development would not be expected to occur. And of course, there's those news, new increased assessed values that get generated from the new development that fund the public infrastructure needed by the development or the project. And the local government only receives those revenues for the period of time that's necessary to pay for the public improvement cost. And increment area, a tax increment area can be no larger when you form it than $200 million in assessed valuation. So in terms of a possible tax increment area boundary, we have identified this as the most likely candidate in Squim that would receive the most benefit. It represents all the areas in green, and it's about 363 acres and well below the $200 million of assessed value. So you still have another tax increment area if you want, if you chose to form one later on for the balance of that $200 million, if you chose to do so. The two public improvements that, that we have discussed with staff and staff has identified as improvements that would stimulate private development and be necessary for private development occur include two lift stations. One at $4.7 million, which represents about half the cost. The other half would come from latecomer agreements that you would form for development inside and outside the city. And then another lift station, too, as well as related water lines for $15 million. So a total of $19.7 million has been identified, at least preliminarily, as the public improvements that would stimulate the private development. And this is a summary table based on the financial information modeling that we have completed to date. It illustrates the projected dollars that would be generated over a 25-year period if a tax increment area were formed based on the private development projections from each of the individual taxing districts that allocate dollars to the city to help pay for the public improvements that you identified. So it's the levy rates within each of these taxing districts are then applied to any assessed valuation growth that occurs after the TIA is formed. And that's largely from new development. And so the levy rate that we've used that will be inside the tax increment area is $3.93 per 1,000 assessed valuation. That's out of a total of just over $7.54. So there's some levies that are excluded, as I mentioned early on, from a tax increment area, and those include the state property tax and the school districts. And so those revenues, the revenues that are shown in this table, they're shown in both present value and then what we call nominal value. The present values are discounted at a rate of 5% to represent the city's cost of capital, what your principal interest might be for issuing debt. And the nominal values are those actual dollars that ultimately would be available to you in order to pay for principal and debt service associated with public improvement. So bottom line is that you can easily support, based on at least the modeling that we've done with the private development that's anticipated, you can support the $19.7 million worth of public improvements based on the modeling projections. And as we continue our analysis, yes.
We, we've got a question. I'm afraid you're going to get ahead of the arm that I see raised.
I'm so sorry, Bob, for the benefit of everyone that is watching this session. The, the slides are not available on the big screen behind us. Council is looking at the slides that you're referencing because they're in our agenda, but for folks that are watching either via Zoom into this public meeting or in the room, they're not able to see the slides that you're referencing at this time. And I just wanted to make that note. Thank you so much. No worries. Thank you.
And we can do that. There they are now.
I'm sorry. I apparently neglected to hit my slides. Hold me back up just very quickly so that you can see the tax increment area that we're referring to and those in the, in the, in the public can see that as well. So this is the 363 acres that are identified in the green as a potential tax increment area boundary, and the two public improvement projects that I mentioned, the $4.7 million and the $15 million are the two lift stations. And this, these are the present values and nominal values, which are speaking of. And so again, bottom line is that you're able to support the, the $19.7 million worth of public improvements based on the, the modeling that we've done so far, which is dependent upon private development occurring or a certain amount of private development occurring within the TIA. This is the state's task and timeline schedule. As the City Manager had mentioned, by November 20th is when you will want and need to be able to submit a notice of intent to the other taxing districts that you intend to complete a project analysis, and they will receive that in 90 days or more following the notice. And that's important because that sets a course and a timeframe for the rest of the analysis because there is a 90-day review period before you can submit that analysis to the Office of the State Treasurer. And so that occurs, once we send that notices out, the earliest date that we can submit a project analysis to the Office of State Treasurer would be on February 19th. The OST Office of State Treasurer then has a 90-day review period. That would end on May 20th. And then, so it's any time after May 20th is officially when the City Council can take action on the formation of a tax increment area if you chose to do so. During February and May of next year, our plan would be to do some early outreach to the taxing districts during that review period being conducted by OST. We'd also present a draft ordinance to the City Council earlier than May, likely in April, so that we could address any comments or questions that you might have. That ordinance, before you take action on that, would be published in the official newspaper at least two weeks before the adoption ordinance date. The statute also requires that we would conduct two public briefings. Those briefings must solely be on the tax increment area and not, they don't necessarily have to be at a regular council meeting. They can be conducted administratively, but those briefings can, because of the timeframes associated with the state has laid out, they also have to be after the Office of State Treasurer provides, provides its, provides its comments to you. So that would be, occur in May. And then you'd have on the schedule to date is a May 26 council meeting in which you would consider the possibility of adopting a tax increment area ordinance. And so as I mentioned at the start and echoing also with the City Manager's comments, really your steps this evening and is to whether or not you'd authorize the City Manager to notice the other taxing districts of the city's potential formation of a tax increment area and really take advantage of the state's tax mechanism for funding public improvements if you chose to do so at a later date. And then, of course, staff would work with us to finalize the, the TIF analysis. In other words, the project analysis, and we'll return to Council for review and approval of that analysis sometime in mid-January of next year. And that completes my brief presentation. Be glad to address questions that Council might have.
Questions?
Thank you, Bob. This is Councilman Butler. Going to your slide that has the map, the green area, is it right to interpret that, that any, any of those lots that are not infilled with green are outside the, the proposed area?
That is correct, Councilman.
Okay. So it's just those that are solid green?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a little bit confused if it's a, a total of 19 million over X amount of years, and the two lift stations are just under $5 million each. Where does the rest of the money go?
Lift station one is $4.7 million, and then lift station two is $15. So the combined total of those is the 19.7.
And who came up with these two projects as opposed to widening the road?
Those were identified as projects in consultation with the city staff as being outside of typically what a developer would be responsible for, for supporting. In other words, the roads inside internal development would largely be the developer's responsibility.
No, I'm talking about West Squim Bay Road, which is the way, how you get to this property.
Councilmember Downer. Paul Dusich, Public Works Director, City of Squim. I think I can answer your questions for you.
Thank you.
For clarity, lift station one is about a $16 million project. All told, we'll be in it for a little over $12 million, $60 million worth of grant. Of that total value, we've assessed 50% of what we're going to be ultimately paying for, for the construction at about $4.7 million. The rest of the money, the rest of that, we're going to do a latecomers agreement. That's why it says 50% of the project cost. The nuance on that a little bit is that the loan we have also has a portion of it that's called a forgivable loan, up to 1.2 million. So we have to take that off the top. We also have to take off the value we're going to get from PNNL because they're not, because they're, they're, they're federal lands. Any improvements they do, we can't get tax revenue from. Therefore, they're going to do a direct payment for their proportionate share of the lift station that we're going to be building. And then the other UGA lands that are in there that are not a part of the green, they are serviced by our new lift station we're building, but because they're outside of the city limits, they cannot be a part of the TIF. So those also will be factored into cost recovery using the latecomers agreement. So it got a little bit complex. It took Nick and I some time to kind of figure out exactly how to go about doing this to make it all work out. Ultimately, we're looking for the TIF to cover $4.7 million of the city's cost for the first lift station. The other $15 million that's allocated or indicated here, that is money that's going to pay for the second lift station that will primarily serve the proposed new development and the marina and some other smaller parcels out there. And it also covers the cost to extend water service to that area. So the $15 million, as is indicated on Bob's slide, it's related to the lift station and the water lines. The decision on whether to do the sewer line first and the lift station first, what happened a number of years ago, because building roads or buildings, maybe sidewalks out there, when there's no land that's being developed, doesn't make a lot of sense. As developer, development occurs, those frontage improvements will start to occur, but they'll occur slower than if we had did a massive project out there. That's kind of the rationale on, first off, why you're seeing $19.7 million under the TIF. And then what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You put in the lift station and the water service, then the development can occur. As the development occurs, we start getting the impact fees and the revenue coming in that'll help fund those other improvements we need to do. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense, and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
But when I say widen the road, I'm talking about from Washington through past Mariners outlook, which is where all the newer development has already taken place.
So the answer to that is it depends upon the color of the money. If you think about it, the projects that we're doing here for the sewer lift station and the water line are funded from the utilities, the water and the sewer utility. The rest of the work that you're talking about as far as widening the road and putting in the curb, gutter, sidewalk, or shared use pass, that's a different pot of money. So we can't use the utility funds for building that. We have to seek other money for doing that ourselves. As I've indicated before in previous conversations, this is an interest of ours. We are seeking additional funds, and we're also looking at other alternative ways of funding these types of transportation projects, not just on West Squim Bay Road, but also other areas of the city where we know we need a lot more sidewalks. We're doing an assessment right now, and it'll take us a little while. We're looking at the sidewalks we have, the sidewalks we need, and we're going to come up with a strategy that we're going to present to the Council on how we propose to go about funding those improvements. And that'll give you the, the opportunity as a Council to decide where you want to put some of this revenue that we're proposing that we think we can gather. Gain, I should say, and how to go about doing that. But that won't be until the first, probably after the first of the year.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand what an enterprise fund is for water and sewer. But how did the city arrive at the, how to prioritize the lift stations over, that has to be done first, in your opinion?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Even though the people that are going to be using it don't necessarily live in Squim?
The current proposal from the developments that I understand is 80% of the homes will be owner-occupied. Whereas in Seabrook, it was a much lower percentage because it was more of a recreational area to go to. Here, the latest I heard from the developers is that they anticipate, based on market conditions, 80% of the homes to be owner-occupied. So they will be residents of, of Squim here. With the two lift stations and the water improvements we're bringing out into that area, we expect to see a lot more of the vacant land and the underutilized land being developed. And so of course, that's where TIF makes sense because you're increasing the values on it. And those, those people will be residents. I expect them, fully expect them to be residents of the city of Squim. As they are along that road frontage, they will be required to do their component pieces of that. That's part of the puzzle we have to try to look at is what's going to be developer-built? What's going to be built by the city? How we can go about doing that? There's an opportunity now because of recent changes in this last year for latecomers agreements, that now we can act as the developer. We can build the improvements, and we can establish latecomer agreements. So that's part of the mix of what we're looking at, how to improve our connectivity across our community. This is one big area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We answered all my questions.
Thank you.
I have another question. So what is the, at this point, do you guys have an estimated amount that, of revenue from this project that we could then? And forgive me if I'm misunderstanding this, but one of the reasons for doing this is that it allows us to collect. Is the purpose simply to collect the money to build the lift stations? Or can, or is there an extra number, oops, excuse me, extra number above that that can then be used by the city to address infrastructure for road users?
Good question. There's certainly a limit in terms of the TIF revenues that could get generated based on the private development. TIF revenues are going to be based on the scope of private development, the timing of private development, and when that, that development takes place, the number of years it takes to get absorbed into community and occupied. And so based on our preliminary projections, we believe you, you should be able to support close to $27 to $30 million worth of debt based on a 5% interest rate. The $56 million, the nominal values, what you'd be able to collect over a 25-year period in which to pay that initial debt service of 25 to $30 million worth of capital cost. So yes, there is, there's potentially more dollars that TIF could help support, but depending upon how that is structured, how much debt the city wants to issue, and the reliance upon that revenues will determine sort of your, the amount that you'll want to, to issue debt for. In other words, this is the amount that we think modeling could support. But, you know, you want to be cautious, too, because if development doesn't happen in a normal circumstances, if you're issuing all of the debt, you're going to be responsible for that, that debt regardless of development occurs or not. And there are certain sort of mitigation strategies that we're going to be exploring with staff and then the developers as we move this project forward. But generally, it's capable, based on our modeling to date, to support $25 to $30 million worth of project cost.
Bob, I'd like to add to that, if I may please, because what I heard the question was, will there be excess funds collected that can be used for other projects? The answer to that is...
Yes, to the extent that you want to do so, when you adopt your ordinance, a tax increment area ordinance, you'll need to identify, at least in a general sense, the infrastructure that you intend to pay with TIF, and then a preliminary estimate associated with that. So to the extent you want to add road improvements in there, you certainly can do so. And we think there's probably a bit more revenue that likely could be captured through the tax increment area process. It's just a matter of how you want to position that and what kind of risks the city wants to take based on the, that actual development occurring.
As a point of clarification, Bob, though, anything that we're going to use the TIF monies for is for, has to be identified as a part of the process. And at this time right now...
Has to be identified as some, right. There's a laundry list that I mentioned earlier that, that you have to. It's either got to be streets, sewer, water, utilities, that laundry list that the state has produced. I mean, you have to identify that upfront when you adopt your ordinance. But based on our modeling to date, you have more than the $19.7 million based on the modeling projections that you could utilize and access. But you'd need to identify what those public improvements are when you adopt that ordinance.
And again, I want to clarify, Bob. There is one most important consideration, and that is if not but for the construction of this public improvement, development would not occur. So that is a measure we need, we take very seriously. We look at it very closely. For the sewer lift station, as well as the water line, it's pretty clear that if we don't build them, and if they're not built, the development as envisioned for this area will not occur. If we had a road plan that showed that there was a major road corridor that needed to be built, and without that road going in, then their adjacent lands would not develop. Clearly, that meets the mark. I'm not myself personally convinced that building sidewalks is going to drive the development to occur if not for that. And I want to be really careful because I don't want to mislead the Council thinking that we can throw everything on the, the cart here, and this is going to be a way of funding it all. It's got to meet that measure and that metric.
Yeah, I mean, like any tax dollars that are spent, and these are tax dollars regardless of where they're generated from. You want to use them wisely and with good stewardship. So things generally that you don't expect the private development is capable of paying for, these would be public investments that you would be making.
And I would just add, great answers. And as you can tell, we don't know some of the, I mean, you're talking really what we will be bringing forward to you in this early part of the year or spring when we get to that point. And when we have that conversation and you look over the numbers and the whole project, you'll see there's risks that are tied to this just because it's, you know, debt. And we'll have to go over that with you. Like, we think it's low risk, and we think it's worth the risk. But, you know, if, you know, some national catastrophe happens and, you know, the market crashes or whatever, and developer, whatever, you know, who knows? But those are all future kind of scenarios that we can walk through.
Any other questions?
So all I would, you know, really ask, and it's not a formal meeting here, and I don't think we need a formal motion because you're not in council meeting, but I just, some nods or thumbs up. I mean, we just need to make, you know, alert the other taxing districts that we're thinking about doing this. And again, no obligation should we choose not to, or you choose not to. So as long as...
Throw our hands?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think you'll be happy with that decision, Yeah, thank you very much. I think you'll be happy with that decision. And we still lots of, lots of chances going forward to, you know, make it permanent or not. So thank you. Bob, any, any last closing remarks or?
No, we'll get started on the next phase of the process.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, mayor.
All right. With that, we'll be adjourned till six o'clock. All right, I'll call this meeting of the Squim City Council to order. If everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the city clerk could please take roll call.
Counselor Kathy Downer.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
Anything for, to change for the agenda? Kathy?
We have a new high school representative. Would you like to introduce her?
At the youth liaison report section, I will, yes.
Not until then?
Not until then. Sorry, Leila.
Never mind.
Okay, since this is a short turnaround to next week's council meeting, we'll do, under item 11, we're going to do our weekly planning meeting then real quick. So that way everybody can participate in that. So we'll get it done for next meeting. So we'll add that under open council discussion. Is there any objections to that? Any?
So adding the agenda planning meeting to item 11.
Yeah.
Like a sub, sub item.
Yeah. Any other changes? Everybody get with that?
That's exciting. I'll finally be able to attend an agenda planning meeting.
All right. See, and then opposed, we'll prove the agenda. All right, no ceremonial tonight, so we'll move on to public comments. This is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of. This is not a forum for hate speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. City clerk?
There's no public comment tonight as no one signed up remotely or for in-person comment.
Okay, moving right along to our first public hearing. This will be the 2025 proposed property tax levy resolution. Again, the subject of this public hearing is the 2025 property tax levy. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff.
Sue Hagenner, Administrative Services Director, I'm Finance Director now, aren't I? I'm Finance Director now. Sue Hagenner, Finance Director, and tonight we're going to talk about the property tax levy for the 2025 budget. As you know, the city council must hold a public hearing specifically on revenue sources for the coming year, and that includes consideration of increasing the property tax revenues up to the maximum allowed by our state of just 1%. And I know 1% doesn't seem like a lot, but the property tax is, it's one of several really solid, important revenue sources to the city. As you know, it's deposited into our general fund and it's used to support general governmental services. It represents about 14% of our total general fund revenue, so it's nothing to sniff at. And again, is, is part of a healthy balance mix of revenues that keeps the lights on. So staff are recommending adoption of the resolution establishing the 2025 property tax levy. These particular documents I hold in my hand are actually due to the county tomorrow morning. So I would much appreciate a signed document from you, mayor, at the end of the document, or at the end of the evening. I have no further comments, but I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, so thank you, Sue. I appreciate the presentation that was sent out in the packet. It's excellent.
Great.
This isn't, this is more of my clarification, not any kind of a challenge. On the second page of the executive summary.
Okay.
Whatever it is, the fourth paragraph talking about the leverage in the city of Squim is projected at 0.924, out several points. This is well within limits of 1.6. I'm just, just wondering, I don't quite get that. I'm trying to figure out.
Right.
Does that mean that we're, we're very efficient? Or does that mean that we have some, we have some improvement to make?
Nope, it's an actual, actually a lower levy rate for the city of Squim reduces the tax burden based upon the individual homeowner's property assessed value. So if you had a levy rate of, let's say, one and, you know, property tax, I don't want to do math in front of you, but if you had one, if you had a property tax levy of one, one is higher than 9.2, right? So the city's portion or the city's burden on a particular taxpayer is actually lessened. And the reason why that happens is if you think about, let's see, the certified levy amount, we are going to be requesting basically $1.9 million in property taxes for next year. The levy rate is determined by, you take the 1.9 million and you divide that by your total assessed value. So the bigger your assessed value, the lower your, the lower your levy rate, and it reduces basically the burden on each individual taxpayer, if you will. Does that make sense? I tried to do a calculation in the presentation, but the levy rate is critical to stay underneath those, those legal limits, and it's nowhere near it, which is, that's a good thing. Does that, okay, just had house, okay.
I guess I do just have a quick question. So the public hearing was announced, and I always expect people to, you know, send us emails talking about it. But I didn't get any for this one. And so I was just curious to ask you real quick. Do you ever get emails from citizens asking questions about these proposed?
Very rarely.
Okay.
Yeah, very rarely. I've had a few very interested citizens in, in previous years. There are questions about fund balance or questions about property taxes. But it's one in a blue moon, honestly.
And I don't mind throwing you a comment on that because I'm just very proud of our Finance Director and Finance Department. And they, as you know, we're in an audit even now in my city management report that you got earlier today. We, every time the state comes, anybody comes, they, we don't even get recommendations. They, they are so good at what they do and have been for so many years. And between their processes and mechanisms and account, accounts management. And then we try to be really clear in the letter that we forward to you all in the beginning of that budget. Most, there's, there's really, we've got the audits on the back end, we've got the information on the front end. And so I think that's what one of the two usually raises questions, and we're pretty tight on both and purposely. So it's a great question, and I just, I really tip my hat all the time to Sue and her team for keeping us in this wonderful place. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to public comment. All right, public comment, this is a public hearing, so all audience members wishing to make public comment will be allowed of three minutes to speak. When it's your turn to speak, please give your name, address, and whether you reside within the city limits of Squim. Please avoid making repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. And we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up, remote or in person.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing. And is there any further council discussion? All right, see, and then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we can move to council action.
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing regular property tax levy for 2025 and authorizing the 1% increase in the regular property tax levy.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and second meeting for the discussion. All right, and city clerk can please take a roll call vote.
Counselor Downer.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Janice.
No.
Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Motion passed 6-1.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, moving on to our next one. This is the proposed 2025 rates and fees. So I'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Staff?
Good evening, council members. Again, Sue Hagenner, Finance Director. And tonight, we are going to talk about updating the city's rates and fees in chapter 3.68 of the Squim Municipal Code, code, as we do this every year. As you know, we take at least annually, we do a review of all of our rates and fees for appropriateness for the following year, and it helps create our revenues, our resources for the following year. The last time you saw this item before you was in September. And since then, there's just been a couple of changes to the materials in front of you. As council might remember, we've had a lot of discussions about site construction permit revenue, especially related to larger developments. We've come to the realization that those fees are not adequate to cover the cost of the services of performing the on-call inspections or the, the site construction inspections. I want to note that the way that the fee is currently structured, it's based on a percentage of the value of the development, which is really not relevant at all to the time we spend on inspection, inspecting those particular developments. So Public Works is suggesting a new formula for determining the amount of the permit, and that's based upon the city's inspector's hourly rate plus any vehicle time multiplied by the expected inspection frequency, which is established by the construction schedule. So we think that's going to do a much better job of recouping some of these fees. In addition, the fee in chapter 3.68 has also made it acceptable for us to direct charge the developer any third-party consulting fees. So we can take care of these anytime we have to use an on-call engineer, maybe the inspector isn't available. Anytime we have to use a, a third party, we can direct charge that and recover those costs from the developer. So that's the only change to the schedule since, since you've last seen it. And staff is recommending adopting the ordinance updating the 2025 rates and fees. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? See, and then we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Again, this is a public hearing. All audience members wishing to make comment will be allowed of three minutes to speak. When it's your turn to speak, please give your name, address, and whether you reside within the city limits of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. Is anyone signed up?
No one signed up for remote or in-person comment. Dang it.
All right, I will close the public comment portion, and we'll go ahead and move on to any further council discussion. All right, if there's none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to council action.
I move to adopt the ordinance updating the 2025 rates and fees schedule, chapter 3.68 of the Squim Municipal Code.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is ready for discussion. Any opposed? All right, see, and then that motion passes. All right, and our third one, city managers' proposed 2025 budget. I'll go ahead and open it. City staff?
Thank you, counsel. Sue Hagenner, Finance Director. Thanks for your patience tonight with all of these public hearings. And again, I wanted to thank you for being flexible to push this meeting to, to tonight so that we can meet our property tax deadlines that we talked about earlier. So now we're going to talk about the 2025 budget in general. It's one of the largest, it's the largest budget that we've ever presented to councils, over 58 million. And that's primarily due to our extensive capital improvement program to the tune of about $24 million that's included in that, which we talked at length about in my presentation the last time. So it's a big one. And again, this is the first of two public hearings. I'll be back to see you next Monday night on the same topic. I do want to bring your attention to a few items that have popped up since I presented in September of 2024, earlier this year. So first of all, on October 14th, council directed staff to find seed money for a Gold Star Memorial in the new Ruth C. McCord Memorial Park in the amount of $5,000. Staff has added that to the budget by using rainy day funds to pay for those, the memorial. So that's the first thing that's changed from, from September. Second of all, it's that this is a three-parter because we've added three FTE since we last talked. So it's come to the, on the first FTE, this is regarding our Building Inspector and Plans Reviewer. So this is one FTE that's been added to the, the listing. The Department of Community and Economic Development recognized that a law goes into effect that basically chops the time we have to issue a permit and complete it from 120 days down to 65 days. So that's chopping the processing time in half. We've added this FTE to basically support compliance with this new RCW. Right now, this FTE is the only thing that's in the budget. It's actually not funded, if you will. So there's no, no dollars associated with this position because we just want to see how things go, right? We have over 900 potential builds out there, but we don't, we don't know when that's going to come in. And we don't want to hire a full-time employee if we don't have the activity to keep everybody super busy. So again, it's just the FTE count and no dollars associated with it. But we're hoping that you'll consider that to give the DCD department flexibility in addressing what could be a tsunami of permitting activity next year with tightened deadlines. And then the two other positions, one, these were suggested by Public Works Department. Like we've been talking about, our strike construction permits have not been adequate to cover the cost of on-call engineering. So let's take a step back. Why are we using expensive on-call engineering? Why are we using expensive on-call engineering? Wouldn't it be more cost-effective to use our own dedicated staff to do what will be capital project inspections and management as well as large development site inspections? So if there's not enough development going on, there's certainly a big enough capital improvement program to warrant bringing a new person on. This is suggested to be, you know, a permanent position, so not temporary. And we think it's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next three to five years by having our own staff conduct those onsite inspections. Finally, again, Public Works recognizes, we've talked a lot about West Squim Bay and all of the capital projects that are happening out there. That is a lot of work to get accomplished. So we want to bring on a temporary construction management manager and inspector for specific to the West Squim Bay, all the West Squim Bay projects. Again, it would be temporary. Nick has crunched the numbers. It's another case of where we, by having a dedicated personnel to those capital projects, we can save hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next couple of, you know, over the span of the life of those West Squim Bay projects. So any questions on the FTEs? I know it's a big ask, but this is a big budget. And we've got some really big plans in Public Works. And we can clearly see that the on-call engineering stuff is really taxing our budget. So we want to be more responsible. Finally, you've seen this item before you before. You know that the YMCA had submitted a municipal funding request for $42,500 in both years of 2025 and 2026. And this request is to fund a youth and family resource navigator. Now, I haven't put money in the budget for this because I asked direction at the September meeting, and y'all had a lot of different questions that you wanted to answer me or that you wanted me to answer. So we sent those questions to the Y, and I emailed you the response from the YMCA on approximately October, I think it was October 1st. So now hopefully you have the information you need to help me or give me direction on what to do with this 2025 budget. I opted to keep the budget static with prior years and come to counsel for direction with any new requests. And that's what I'm doing tonight here. I am suggesting using rainy day funds for this particular request if you decide to move forward and direct staff to add it to the budget. And just so you know, that if this is added to the budget, it would make total contributions to health and human and community services to almost $400,000 or 3% of the general fund budget. So that's hu- huge contributions comparatively speaking to our, to our community members. So okay, I think I'll, I think I'll stop there. And take any questions.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? So if we approve the YMCA bit, if did get budgeted, it would bump up. Is, is this then, what is our current human services spending? And then what would the, how much of, is this doubling what we're, what we're spending, or I'm sorry?
That's fine. We, I didn't, I didn't include the same worksheet I had as I, as I had done in September for you. But we currently spend about $350,000 on health, human, and community services. And that is anywhere between the Squim Health and Housing Collaborative, to the Boys and Girls Club, to the Shipley Center, as well as to other community-related organizations like the, like the EDC and some economic development organizations. This would be in addition, so we would be bumping up to about $400,000 in total health and human services funding.
Do I remember, I might not be remembering this correctly, but did I hear you say probably back in September, that, that if we did do this, it would bump it up so that our health and human services would be one of the highest in the state?
You know, there's really not a lot of data out there, but for the most part, I found, I think it was the city of Renton and Paulsboro, they were all, they were roughly around 1.5 or 1% of the general funds overall budget or 1.5. Again, I wasn't able to find a lot of city policies on how a city is going to fund these types of services. But MRSC helped me do some research and dug around as best they could for us.
Did that help you, Harmony?
Yeah. Because currently our, our human services spending at the three, minus the YMCA, we're, we're already over 1.5%.
Yeah, we're about 1.6, specific to human and health services. Yep.
Okay, great. But would, but then, okay, but so then if we're at 1.6 now, adding the YMCA thing isn't going to double us because you said that adding it in would then put us at 3%.
My percentages might be wrong. I might have included the whole 400,000. I have my note that says 3%, but now I'm thinking back on it. And I believe that 400,000 also includes stuff like the Economic Development Partners that we have, which, which isn't really health and human services. So.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate, thank you for taking the time to clarify.
Sure.
And to help counsel make those decisions, you know, we've tried to tighten up that grant application process just so it's fair and transparent and all that. We have deadlines and they all fill out the same forms. We've tried to make it super simple and all that. Finance also prepared a one-page summary going back two or three years and then, so you could put it into context. You know, it's, it's not radical, but it's nice to see who's asking what and how much over time. So it's your call, but if any of us were you, we would want to see the bigger picture. So we presented that to you. I don't, I don't know if we did this time, but it was in the first.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't include it in these materials, but I can also send it out to counsel again if, if you're curious about that particular item.
Do we know if the number of homeless or houseless youth in Squim has changed? Since I think the last time we received a report, it was about 180 students. Is that right?
You know, Mike Hill is not, Chief Mike Hill is not here tonight, and he has just spent about six hours with the SHHC group doing their strategic planning. And I know that he is looking to improve the, the reporting and the key performance indicators related to human services and health funding. So that might be something that he can update you on. He's at a conference though right now. But I'm not, I'm not sure about the numbers. I'm not super close to that organization. I'm just.
Yeah, that is a great question, Vicki. And when I met with Reagan just, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, she indicated that better definitions need to be around that. If someone, she, she made the comment, if a student, and maybe, I don't know if the students would know this, but if a student's living with a grandparent on Bell Hill, that's, you know, not in their own home or something like that. So she, she's trying to tighten up definitions of what homeless means. So I, I think that, it's not my thing, but I'm happy to dig into it if you'd like. But I know there's some questions about those numbers.
It says in here, the OSPI, so the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction Report Card shows that in the 2023-24 school year, 121 students at Squim School identified as homeless using their most recent demographic record, a number that represents 4.6% of the student population.
What year was that?
Last school year.
Last year. Okay, yeah.
Oh, thanks for finding that, Vicki.
I've never, I've never dug down into that. It's not a city thing, but I've, I know there's questions.
If there's homeless people in our city, it's a city thing, right? Because it's the policies that we make that make housing available to people. We live in a city where housing is available to you if you have a lot of income. And if you don't, you get bumped out of the housing market, and that impacts youth, and they're trying to go to school.
For sure. Yeah.
Quick question about the YMCA funding. Is it, just for clarification, 42.5 cumulatively for '25 and '26, or 42.5 for '25 and 42.5 for '26?
The latter.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, with the digital budget book, I can kind of, you know, just pop that change in there without causing a lot of heartbreak, so.
And I assume everybody, no, I'm not going to say that, just my own opinion. I'm supportive of the YMCA funding for a year, but I'd also really like to see them try and find sustainable funding that will keep them going.
You mean to see if they can get the funding back from the DCYF, the Department of Children, Youth, and Families? Which is where, how that position was funded before?
Ideally.
Yeah, or another source. Interesting. I, I thank you for sharing your, your perspective.
And I don't think we're going to see that in the state budget this year because, or this biennium, so that's two years because of the budget shortfalls, the revenue shortfalls. But maybe after two years.
Any more counsel discussion on this?
If you, if it wasn't done this round, but previously, I would be interested in seeing the breakdown of where those, that $350,000 is allocated? Just for future reference.
Yes, I apologize about not including it. I'll update it for these numbers and send it out to counsel tomorrow morning. Yep.
But ideally, we wouldn't need this position if we worked hard enough on fixing the housing problem.
I'd also say, but there is a caveat of there's only so much we can do, which is unfortunate. But there is only so much we can do.
I, I disagree. I think we need to think outside of the box more and stop doing what everybody else is doing and do what we need to do for our community.
Anything further? All right, go ahead and move on to public, go ahead and move on to the public comment. So our audience members wishing to make comment will be allowed in the three minutes to speak. When is your time to speak? Please give your name, address, and whether you reside in the city limits. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. Does anyone sign up to speak?
No one has signed up for a remote or in-person public comment.
All right, go ahead and close the public comment portion. Is there any further counsel discussion? So I think staff definitely needs direction on the YMCA, though.
So is this be an appropriate time to move to direct staff to add funding? The proposed motion is that what you're saying, Brendan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
I'd like to get a majority of direction.
No, I just was not in terms of the process. Is this that moment? So I moved to direct staff.
Well, let me, let me close this. Is there any further discussion in general? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. I moved to direct staff to add funding for the YMCA Youth and Family Resource Navigator in the amount of $42,500 to the 2025 budget using rainy day funds.
I second that motion.
All right, move and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed?
Can, can we afford to do this, Brandon?
The rainy day fund is, is, there's $940,000 in there at this point in time. So it depends on what you want to do with your rainy day funds. That's a policy, that's a policy decision.
This is very difficult to vote against something this emotional.
Right.
And like Rachel said, I thought one year would be a good compromise.
Okay.
I don't see this as, it is a city issue and it is not a city issue. I for, I mean, as far as city council, but it's very, a very emotional issue.
So in the motion, it just, it does just say, you know, add the 42,500 to the 2025 budget. So it doesn't address a two-year contract or a two-year period of time. So I think you're clear there.
Okay, is there anyone at the city that could help them look for? I, we have a grant person. Is there somebody at the city that could help them look for other funding?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pitch that one to my city manager.
Well, and I would say we are. So as you know, their old, I don't forget the total official title of it, but Marin, who is our city manager office administrative assistant, she used to run that program and be very close to that data. And their budget required closing that position down, and we picked her up. They, she does serve the YMCA in some, not formal consulting, but is, is helping them with ideas and whatnot. I don't know if she's grant writing, but she is facilitating the conversation and some solutions. So we, and I meet with Wendy from the YMCA regularly and with Reagan. So we're, I don't know if it's, it doesn't lead to, like, we're not looking for cash for them, but we are facilitating the conversation and very interested and concerned about the issue, so.
But counsel has already been told, this is in addition to the school's position, not instead of.
Right, this position in, in her response was to help families and students move beyond the walls of the school.
That's right.
Kathy, I appreciate your raising that, taking the risk of raising the question you're raising for us all. I thank you for that. In Matt's city manager's transmittal letter, there's a paragraph that outlines our various fund balances. And thank to, you know, good management and movements in terms of, of bringing the city into kind of the 21st century here, we've, we've got very healthy fund balances. So a commitment of 42.5 out of 954,000 that we're waiting to spend seems like a responsible thing to do for our citizens and particularly our citizens that are more vulnerable.
That's exactly.
I understand what you're saying, but, but it's, I don't know, it's not really something a city council does. And we have looked, we have been brainstorming about housing for three years. And we just keep hitting a wall and hitting a wall. I don't have a problem with funding it for one year. And while they have time to recover and plan and and this is new for the school, correct? Who did it last year? No, I mean for the Y. Who did it last year at the Y?
It, it was funded through that.
It was funded through DCYF. So this is a position, this position, by us saying yes, this position continues to exist.
Right.
It's already been happening.
Okay.
And they lost the DCYF funding.
Got it.
So us saying yes keeps it moving forward.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And that's what the rainy day fund is for, one-time opportunities. And if you're thinking of this as a one-time opportunity, then maybe giving them yet another year to plan.
And I don't have the best memory ever, but I do, I do think I remember Wendy saying they, they are, they're constantly looking for grants. And you know, the Y has access to a lot of grants that even the school districts and cities don't have. don't have access to for these kinds of things. And as you probably also know, the YMCA is moving kind of away from swim and gym and moving into more social support resources and programs and whatnot. And so I think they'll be, you know, continuing to pursue funding to do all of those things for our community. So I think your concerns are valid, but I think they're very actively trying to shift and support in a sustainable way these types of programs and positions.
That's your question?
Yes, I had just have one thing to say. There but for the grace of God go I, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm comfortable with the one year because I, I just feel like this, I need more information. It's a little, a little rushed, but I'll appreciate when you send that out tomorrow so I can see what we've historically been funding.
Happy to do that.
But, and I also know it's, housing is definitely a component of this, but there's a lot of the students that, it may not be a housing issue. They could have housing, but they don't have a good family environment that's safe. And so there's a lot of reasons some of these kids are couch surfing beyond just the housing.
So there's a motion on the table? And it's been seconded?
Is there any opposed to the motion? Does anybody need it repeated? Everybody understand it? Any opposed? All right, see, and none, that motion passes and we'll come back to this next week.
Okay, and then, so when you see your ordinance, the next time, this particular item will be added into the rainy day budget. I'm going to check, double-check some of the numbers, but I'll get all of that updated within the next day or so and in the bucket for Heather. Thank you again, counsel.
All right, consent agenda.
Items on tonight's consent agenda, claim vouchers totaling seven hundred, nine thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-six cents, city council meeting minutes for October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, on-call material testing services recommendation to award, and the twenty-twenty-five planning commission work program.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any opposed? I see none, that motion passes. I know general business, so move straight into reports, youth liaison.
And I will quickly just say we have one of our new youth liaisons here, Leila Sundin. She is fabulous, and I'm happy to report she has completed all of her training before coming here. Thank you so much.
Use Kathy's.
Great. Hi, my name's Leila. I am really excited to be here. I'm a junior and I'm the president of Interact. And I'm Malia's vice president, executive vice president for our high school A S B. Yeah.
Okay, hello. As you said, I'm very excited Leila's here. I'm excited to have a partner again. And next week, you'll meet our third youth liaison, Lincoln. He's going to be sitting here, too. All right, recent news, the Boys and Girls Club just had their annual auction. I don't know how much they made, but I will report on that once we know. The senior class at the high school has been doing a lot of fundraisers on November twenty-third. They're doing a fundraiser at Applebee's where they are serving breakfast. So if you're interested, please let me know.
Say that date again.
November twenty-third from eight-thirty to ten a.m. Recently, we had some sports go to state, so we had Dawn Holstead in cross-country and we brought a team of six girls for swimming to state. That was awesome. And then the hiking club is doing their first hike at Dungeons and Spits this Saturday for the high school.
Yeah. Also, our school play, The Play That Goes Wrong, is opening this Thursday. It'll run through this Sunday and then close. I've heard lots of good things. This is pretty exciting. Hometown Holidays Parade is happening. I believe this weekend and Interact will be helping out with that. It will be parade marshals. And then also Interact did the Holiday Lights in Town. So we just finished the corner, like kitty corner to Hurricane, the security bank. And that was a, well, last weekend's project, so, yep, that's all I have.
For the record, Hometown Holidays is the last weekend of November, correct?
Last weekend of November. So it's not this weekend.
Okay, okay, good, good. Hold your horses, everybody.
Malia, what did you say the third student liaison's name is?
Lincoln Forest.
Lincoln.
It's lovely to meet you, Leila. Welcome. And yes, thank you both.
And thank you for all your hard work on the Interact Club and Leadership Club.
All right, city manager.
Thank you again, counsel. Nice to visit with you. Hopefully you, per our new kind of process, you received an email with my city manager report, so I can just hit some highlights and answer any questions. I did want to thank again, it's in our report, all these things will be in it, but just some quick highlights. Thank you, mayor and deputy mayor, for participating in the Veterans Day re-ceremony. I, one of my only days out of town happened to be that day, so I've heard it went great and appreciate your participation and support. Another big deal in the report is our business survey got sent out. I think it's sixteen hundred small businesses or whatever, all businesses. So that's the last survey. You know, we've surveyed our employees every year. We've surveyed our residents and got great information. The same company that we use for our resident survey, they're the, one of the nation's biggest and longest and whatnot. They also do business surveys, so we, we used it with them, E T C is their name. Anyway, and they're the ones that helped us put this together. So we'll be eager to see, we don't have a closing date, so we're just going to keep it open and then keep trying to promote it until we get a significant number, a statistically significant number, so we can draw some conclusions from that. So eager to hear from them, what, what they think of the city and our codes and what we can do better for our businesses. So that will be great. Economic development, of course, is very busy, so there's a lot of housing coming and they're, they're working with Habitat and others. Sue Leave, I did want to just highlight the four A in my report. We're almost done with the state audit. And there's been no recommendations or concerns and we're probably ninety percent through, so kind of per usual. Just wanted to call out our great finance department. And finally, we presented, our public works went over and presented to the E D C group, a subsection of the E D C group is responsible for the opportunity funds. So it's a fund that's created through a percentage of the tax and it's supposed to go to infrastructure, workforce, and, and now you can also apply for housing anyway. We submitted a request for five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and it, and it looks like we've been approved to go, to be included in the recommendations to the commissioner. So hopefully that will happen and I think, I feel really good about that. And finally, lastly, kind of wanted to let you know that the James Tenon sixteen patient, inpatient site construction permit was approved. And so we're just, we'll see the beginning of some construction there coming soon as they coordinate with the city. So very exciting to see that facility go into construction and then vertical and be a resource for our wonderful community. So thought I'd point that out. Any questions I can answer for council?
Yeah, thanks again, Matt, for doing this written report and sending it out ahead.
It's easier on me and I like it, so I'm following your, your, your model.
Great process improvement. But with the survey, the business survey, do you have an idea of what the statistically significant number of responses will be? Out of sixteen hundred, I'm guessing it's somewhere around a hundred, maybe?
My guess, I, I don't know that number. That's a good question.
Okay.
So I know our representative from E D C is one of the founders of E T C. So he's been there like forty years and he would know that off the top of his head and we email back and forth a lot, so I can find that out, sure.
Sure, good.
Yeah, and I think you saw that we're working closely with, you know, the media, doing a lot of social posting, trying to get the chamber and downtown market folks to all support that.
And at risk of exposing my lack of attention or ignorance, is there any progress on the director for I T position?
Oh, is that not in there? Oh, I think it was in there. So from fifty-three, yeah, it's been a long process.
Oh, yeah, sorry, under human, so I was looking under the I T section.
Yeah, no, it is there and we have, believe it or not, it goes very quickly. We, we did our work internally and took it from fifty-three applicants to fifteen. Emily and I interviewed those, got it down to eight, gave it to an outside consultant that tested them all or called them all on a technical skill level, because Emily and I don't know that, but we, we went through their resumes and kind of felt out their experience and their, you know, kind of personalities and whatnot, and got it to eight. Then the consultant took it and got it down to four. We extended in-person visits for those four and one dropped out before we could arrange for them to come. So now we're down to three and that, those interviews will happen this weekend, this Friday.
Hmm.
Thank you.
I have a question. Could you expand on the acronyms in one D?
Oh, I'm trying not to use acronyms.
I just want to make sure that the acronym is this, that, that it stands for what I think it stands for.
So the Narcan Memo of Understanding?
Mm-hmm, and then, and then the next one? No, I know what M O A stands for, but.
M O U?
Excuse me, yes.
Memo of Understanding.
So when the acronym W S U, what is that in reference to?
Washington State, Western, Washington State University, yeah, I think that's Mellingham, yeah.
Okay, so then, so that, so, yeah, could you just expand on that? That's interesting. So that's a, I'm just going to let you.
Yeah, I'm happy to do this. This is brought to you from councillor Butler, who wondered if, is there a Narcan, you know, a fentanyl issue and an overdose issue? And if so, how could you all put some resources to that problem? So there's three different entities that provide a Narcan distribution option, so a container of some sort that, that can be accessed. And so you, you saw one of them, I think Siri came here from the county health department and she, she submitted, I think you all saw, but she submitted a M O U that I think was from Serenity House or one that they like to use. But Chief Hill also attends other health and human resource committees and, and they offer that service as well. So I believe it was councillor Butler that asked us to get a template together that would be ready to go should a need surface. So we took all three of those M O Us from those three different entities. They're about the same, just little nuances. We, we aggregated them all, passed them through legal and whatnot, and feel like we have a single-source template that addresses everything all three of them had in it and now have sent it back out to those three to see if they will accept that one template. So we don't have, you know, three different agreements for kind of the same thing. And we're just waiting to hear back from them. And, and anytime the need then arises, I think we're working closely with the fire department and, and other groups that might tell us kind of where to, you know, kind of where to put that. Again, that would only be if we're talking about city property. Outside of city property, there are some of these Narcan distribution resources available from churches to other private properties around town.
I guess I'm just, I'm just curious, does, so, and I'm just asking as an educational piece here, does the university, Washington State University, does, do they send out, do they, is this an initiative from the university that they do for all, for communities? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what that, where, because it's not like we're next to Pullman. They don't have, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Good question. Do you want to answer?
As part of the state opioid plan, the, the state procures Narcan and then works with different entities to help them get kiosks located in these dispensing machines so that they can help keep communities safe. So it's more coming from like the state government.
And Waziu then?
Is just somebody they work with to help get it out, a community partner.
Cool, I had no idea. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Yeah, and thank you, Vicky. Mike Hill's the one that gave us the template. I just saw the word document and then added it to the other two. So I'm glad Vicky was able to answer that.
This, this great, it's great. The, in my experience, Waziu does so much good philanthropy out there in the world and thank you. Thank you for expanding on it.
And I'll knock out, I'll get rid of those acronyms. I thought I did, but I'll be better about that.
Well, I mean, just reading it, I was like, hmm, interesting. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? Like council reports, anything?
The PARB board met today right before our city council meeting. Um, oh.
Harmony, on behalf of Matt, I want to ask what that acronym is.
Oh.
Touche.
I did it again. I did it myself. Excuse me. Right before this meeting, the Parks, Arbor and Recreation Board, excuse me, met and I am the council liaison. Sorry about that. Um, thank you. Keep me honest. I love it. So other, they had a really great presentation from the Pioneer Memorial Park Garden Club. They are talking about adding in, let me make sure I read it or I get it exactly right. They want to call it the, oh, I put in an acronym, darn it. I did it to myself. They're calling it the P P P, Accessible to All. Um, yes, I should, either way, it's, it's about putting in a walking path, ADA accessible through Pioneer Memorial Park. And they are currently in the process of looking to fund it and help. And in, and in doing so, they're coming to the PARB and the city for a letter of support to support their grant writing. So stay tuned. There will be more information coming to you through the usual channels of the Park Arbor and Recreation Board, not the PARB, excuse me. And that's what I have on that in terms of a committee report. Thank you.
All right, let's do a quick agenda.
So for those council members that haven't been able to be at agenda planning, directly looking at Harmony. So normally, they'll bring up the agenda for the upcoming meeting and we'll talk about, like, get a little context of what we'll be talking about at the upcoming meeting. But then we also have this document that shows. But then we also have this document that shows the meeting coming up and the meeting after that. So in case nobody knew, there's constantly something on timelines. So it's not like everything is just thrown together willy-nilly. Everything is planned.
Wow, a peek behind the curtain.
This is a, a, a big part or a, a regular and significant part of our senior management team. Every Tuesday morning, we all meet here and with a clerk and we review these things. We got lucky tonight because often under column E will be tentative or I'm sure, or whatever. And there's usually more notes. It happens to be everything is committed by those in column D. So no tentative. And so all this has been confirmed. So we could do this meeting tonight. And that's about what we'll take what you see there and turn it into the agenda that you're used to.
All right. So on tap for next Monday night is part two of Sue's budget hearing. Consent agenda is going to be a stormwater system agreement with Department of Ecology. Three items are on the consent agenda from the, for the water reclamation facility. Lindsay's going to present the rezona map a minute for the mobile home park. And then the sister city is going to provide an update.
I imagine we'll have a big crowd next, next meeting. We might have to recess after that agenda item.
Not for Rachel's.
I would like you guys to watch that. Yeah.
We, we, we have, for a year and a half, we've had a really strong showing from the owners of the manufactured homes and their parks. And so they're very eager to know that it's now moved out of the planning commission and back to you all for your consideration. So my guess is you're right. Up to you.
Easy peasy. Some of them, there's a lot of information, like we have no idea what's going on. And so there's a lot of context given at those meetings to help us feel better about it. But that one was very quick.
The last proclamation for the year is Human Rights Week, and that's the week of December ninth. So there won't be any, any proclamations from me this month, but I'll do the one for December ninth. If anybody wants helps, wants to help with that, let me know. And then do we need to redo the list for the next year or just use the same list? Do we want to?
We'll probably need to make sure it's updated because there was a few, I think.
Can I work with Heather on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to bring that list back up real quick again, Heather? Yeah. And for the ninth?
Vicky, I so appreciate your leadership on the proclamations. It's, it's huge. It's essential. Thank you very, 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 very much. I wish I could be more involved.
Why we got this, Harmony, if you want to take a look and see if you're comfortable doing the ninth? I don't want to throw you under the bus.
Oh, no. Thank you. So what Brandon's referring to is he is, I love that, I love your outreach to other counselors to invite us to be learning the processes. And of being the facilitator of these meetings. Thank you for inviting me to, to be a participant in that and to potentially be leading the December ninth meeting. At this point, I, I very, very much appreciate the invitation, but I would like to allow other counselors to take it on at this time if others are feeling inspired, honored by the invitation. Thank you very much. But I'm going to respectfully keep, keep studying. So for another meeting in the future. Thank you.
We'll find a tougher one.
Oh, boy.
Anybody else like a shot? Vicky, Dan?
No, I get to run a lot of meetings during my day jobs.
To chair the December ninth meeting. For funsies.
You want to go out there, Kathy? You want me to go? Everybody okay with that? All right, as long as it's quick.
It's all right. I'll keep an eye on you. Yeah. What was the question? Sorry.
What was the shortest meeting we had? Wasn't it you? Was it an hour, less than an hour?
I don't remember.
Are we, is this still the open council discussion section of the meeting?
I just had one more agenda planning question.
Okay, please go for it.
Are we still planning a potluck?
Yes.
Okay.
This is really important.
It really is.
Food is always important. All year Heather does dinner, gets dinner together for us. So last time we met, we talked about the council being in charge. I talked to my daughter. I can do salmon and either halibut or cod. Is there anybody who doesn't eat fish? Should we do like a, I can do like a roast or something too? Everybody loves fish.
What an honor. Thank you.
And then you were going to do dessert?
I'll do dessert.
And then we're looking for side dishes or a bag of chips or whatever. Whatever you think you can pull off. But we want to take the responsibility off of Heather and then feed for the ninth. So not next week, but the ninth, planning way ahead. I used to throw a freight at a grocery store and I've broken that on my shoe. Yes. You can, I'll send, I'll send out an email or I'll send something through Heather to remind you guys and you can say just heads up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So if, are we, so are we still officially in open council discussion? Okay, great. I have had a member of the community reach out to me. They are very, very concerned about the fireworks in Kerry Blake. And I don't think that they are the only person in our community who feels this way. I think that. Well, for starters, they have, and you all have received it, it's the letter from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, which is signed by two. Two of their folks, Katie Loschman, who's a wildlife area manager, and Shelley Ament, who's their district biologist. And this letter is talking about their concerns about the fireworks show and its proximity to the North Olympic Wildlife Area's Bell Creek Unit, which is also known as the Gary Oak Restoration Space. And that their letter at the end says that we think an adjustment of either moving the fireworks show or switching to a drone show at Kerry Blake Park could be beneficial to the North Olympic Wildlife Area. So that's, that's their letter. And you all received this about a month ago on the dais. This was a letter that was passed out to all the counselors. I also have Susan Griffin's letter. I don't know if council has received it, but I will give it to Heather so that you all can see it also. And so the question here is one that I think we owe to the community that we should explore. What we, I think they, it's important to have this discussion to, to, to research alternatives and come up with. And, and then bring those, bring this discussion back officially here on the dais so that our community can see the why and the how behind whether there is an alternative space for a fireworks show. What does it look like to have a drone show instead of a fireworks show? And I think that doing that research and having this discussion on, as council, will be a very important step in helping everyone come to. An understanding of where this, where, where it is currently, where it could potentially evolve, whether it need, whether, all of the above. I'm not going to speculate on whether any type of this kind of research would. Bring forth any kind of change. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. But I'm just, I'm, I think that we owe it to, to look into this further. Because we do have a concerned citizen who says she's not alone. And I think she's right. There are lots of folks out there who I think are concerned about the way that the fireworks impact. The community, the, the, the fire risk to the vegetation and the, the. Wildlife that does use Kerry Blake the majority of the year and their, and the impact that, that one event has on their lives. In that particular moment, specifically the one that she's talking about in Susan's letter is that on the night of the fireworks show in Kerry Blake, the folks that are mitigating the fire risk are spraying water into the hedge row behind the soccer field and drenching that whole space. And that that is a very disruptive practice to the birds that nest in that hedge row all three hundred and sixty-four other days of the year. So this is, like I said, a concern that I don't think she is alone. I think there are other folks in the community who have these concerns about drier conditions during the middle of the summer when the fireworks show happens. And that the, a research of alternatives and a discussion for the benefit of ourselves and the community is warranted. That's what I'd like to, that is what I'm presenting tonight. Thank you.
You do know we have a drone show.
Yes, there is one during the Sunshine Festival. Yes. I believe that this community member is suggesting that we have a drone show in lieu of a fireworks display in July because there is less, I mean, anything can happen with electronics. But I mean, undeniably, there is less, way less of a fire hazard with flying drones than there are with lighting fireworks and, and falling embers from fireworks. So that's what I, that's, that's what I'd like to present. And that was a kind of a Cliff Note version of her letter. Thank you.
Did you want to put this on the agenda is what you're saying?
Well, I think that, I think that I'd like to ask for guidance from fellow counselors and, and staff about how to proceed forward with this. Because I think that we would like, I think, yes, it needs to be on the agenda, but there also needs to be the. Background research from city staff about how this, about the various options, about whether there is another space to have it, about whether there is. About the, you know, doing the math about here's how, what the drone show would be or, or the stipulations or, I don't know, like all of the above. It just needs to be researched. And then is that something that we want to ask this community member to do that research? Or we want our staff to do that research? This is why I'm bringing this up. I, I feel, I'm feeling compelled to bring this up to council because this is an important issue that I think deserves to be explored further.
I feel like the fireworks show just started in the past five years, maybe? I mean, it's not been very long. So I guess my question for staff would be, what prompted that to start? Was it just that we didn't have, and we don't need the answer right now. This could be for future, but what prompted the start? And, you know, was there a demand from the public? We, we have a parade, which is great. And, you know, maybe, maybe there's not a need for anything.
Counsel, if I may, I can perhaps give a little bit of insight to how this came about. For purposes of the record, Christina Nelson-Gross, City Attorney. I believe that this, the city hosted Fourth of July fireworks occurred after the city passed its ban on the display of fireworks. And the sentiment was that because we were taking away the community celebration, that we should be offering something in its place for that celebration. I'm not going to, you know, claim to have all of the nuances and, and, you know, the discussions and that sort of thing, but that was, that was the gist of it. If we're taking a community celebration, a form of community celebration away, we should do something to supplement it. And I don't recall if there was conversations about drones at that time or not. But perhaps Barb or someone else would know. But, but that's how it started.
And regarding the drones, if I remember correctly, the contract with the drone show company that does the Sunshine Festival drone show, part of our contract in there says, we will do your drone show, but you cannot have any other drone shows. Because this is what makes us unique is being able to do this drone show, having it directly tied to the Sunshine Festival.
And I don't recall that exclusivity clause with them, but you may be right. I have heard from Barb that to, to schedule a drone company to come in on the Fourth of July when everybody is in demand for that, you know, asking for that would be astronaut, you know. So maybe it's worthwhile getting close to the numbers, but she, she was really concerned about that piece and she would be the one to know. So I don't have those numbers, but I know she's quite concerned about that.
So what?
As a point of order.
I'm just curious if we want this conversation to go on just ad hoc, or if we want somebody on council to.
I was just gonna make a.
Move that we go, we do something other than just continue to talk about it without research. So.
Yeah. So my, would this be helpful? I motion to direct staff to provide possible alternatives to this. Location alternatives, if any, and if there is any drone show exclusivity preventing us from having a drone show. Is that enough guidance? Does that fit what you're looking for? I feel like, like it's specific enough to get answers we are looking for.
Yeah. I think that, sure, I would love to, yes, I would like, I think, I think your motion captures it well. And to, to really, yes, to get the details on whether an, an alternative space exists. And, and either A, how much the drone show would cost to have during the Fourth of July or, and/or any exclusivity parameters.
And I'll amend my motion to include how much would a drone show cost?
And can I just ask for clarity? Did you want staff to look into public, public comment or to survey or to do anything like that? Or is it just off of those, that letter or two?
I guess just going off me, I just want to know those answers first.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but let's start with some, with some research and then, thank you, Matt. We can, if we can send out, yeah, I suppose, sure, we could survey the public about that question if they would and get even more data. So yes, more data. Thank you. I will second the motion that Rachel just made as amended.
There's a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
I'd like clarification. I have the motion written down, so I want to make sure I have it correct, please. Rachel, I move to direct staff to provide possible location alternatives, if any, if there is a drone show exclusivity in the contract preventing us to have or having a drone show and how much would a drone show cost? Thank you.
Everybody good on that motion? Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Do we have to specify a timeline? Yeah, it, there's no, yeah, no urgency. I wanted to specify that, you know, as, as staff is able to, to go through that process. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Yes. Sorry. So we're still. So we're still in open council discussion, but the, talking about the homeless youth prompted me to think about, I don't know if you guys remember, but back when we were talking about like housing options and there was an app to try and help people find roommates. Do you remember that? Okay, so my question is, and I don't know if this would be a discussion with the school district or like the kids' families. I don't know how far that would go. But like, I would love to be able to house one of these kids if there's a program. I'm hearing there's a program. Okay.
DCYF has a program.
Okay.
It's like foster care light.
And I, okay, because I've wanted to foster kids, but we can't because we don't have a house. And so that was always a barrier. It's like.
I can send you the link. But because this isn't just a problem in our city, DCYF has a program that, like the Silver Nest program that we're talking about for elders, where you can kind of match somebody who has a house with somebody who's housing insecure. And you don't have to go through all of the same qualifications. We do have to meet like background check and that kind of stuff. And it is called Independent Youth Housing Program. And so with the department, oh. It's on the Department of Children, Youth and Families website, but it might, the funding might come through the Department of Commerce. But I'll send out, I'll send a link to Heather and she can share it out. And I think part of things that we can do, like we promoted the Silver Nest just to promote things like this.
And like, there's things, like, I don't know how it would impact my Section 8 voucher. So I would have to look into that also. But it's like this constant reminder of it really takes a village to raise kids. And if there is anything that anybody in this community can do, I implore you to look into this program.
The Silver Nest program may have been on hold for a while. The last time I talked with the OAA, they said that they were rebranding it and reorganizing it. So I don't know what that meant when he told me that. But hopefully it still exists because I think in theory, it's an excellent idea to match up people with roommates. Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing and then I'm done. I promise.
I was just looking back at my notes and I wanted to just acknowledge here that I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Coast Guard Base on November 11th. And it was, it was a very, very, it was an excellent ceremony. Musical performances from all across the peninsula and some dignitaries from the Coast Guard were there. Admiral Fosse, who's the regional for Montana, Idaho, Oregon, and Washington for the Coast Guard, was the main speaker. It was, it was a really beautiful event and I'm glad I was there. I took my kids, definitely very moving. And, oh, and Mark Ozias and Randy Johnson were also there. So thank you so much.
Anything else for open discussion? All right, next meeting will be non-Mondays at 6 o'clock. And if we have a motion adjourned?
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
So moved.